Welcome everybody to the Adams County, Adams District 14 School Board Meeting. Everybody that's standing against the wall, can I get you to go into the overflow room? Because the fire code doesn't allow you to stand against the wall. If there's seats, you can sit here. But until there's vacated seats, we do have to have the halls so we can get out.
A las personas que están de pie de este lado, les pedimos que por favor tomen asiento o pasen al salón de enseguida porque de acuerdo a las reglas de seguridad del Departamento de Bomberos nos impiden que tengamos bloqueado ese lugar. Gracias.
Can we have the students and their families that are going to be recognized, please stay here because we're going to need them.
A los estudiantes y sus familias que van a ser reconocidos esta noche, les pedimos que se queden en este salón. Gracias.
I'd like to recognize some city council members here tonight. I'd like to welcome the community here tonight. All the teachers, all the students, all the, everybody that's here. Welcome to the Adams 14 Board of Education meeting. Thank you for coming, student, I mean, city council. But that will get started. Can I have everybody stand to the... For the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Monica, can I have roll call, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Dr. Hyde?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rolla?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Excused. I need an approval of the minutes for November the 14th, 2017.
Motion to approve the minutes for 2000, November 2017.
Seconded. Any discussion? Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
President Archuleta, that should read, November 28th meeting minutes.
Oh. Okay, can I get a motion for the approval of the November 28th, 2017 minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of November 28th, 2017.
Any discussion? Hopefully you read the minutes. Yeah. Can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Yes.
I have to say aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to recognitions. Oh, I need the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Motion for the approval of the agenda.
President Archuleta, prior to the approval of agenda, there needs to be a small amendment.
Oh, yes.
This one?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a, there's a...
Need to amend.
There's a need to amend the agenda. There's a need to amend the agenda to correct the resolution to the state of, to the state, the correct date. It is to read, adopted and approved this 12th day of December 2017. I think it has the wrong date on that. So can I get a motion to amend it? So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Now can I have roll call, Monica, please?
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Moving on to recognitions and celebrations, Dr. Abrego.
Yes, we do have two. We have a, from Dupont Elementary, Girls on the Run, their principal, I don't know, Pat Almeida, she is here. Good. Pat, if you would come up to... Yes.
Good evening, President Archuleta, distinguished board members, Dr. Abrego, and the Adams 14 students, staff, and community. It is my great pleasure to come here this evening to recognize an elite group of athletes that train at Dupont Elementary School. We have just completed the 11th season of Girls on the Run, and we are preparing for season number 12. Girls on the Run is a nonprofit program that works to encourage pre-teen girls to develop self-respect and healthy lifestyles through dynamic, interactive lessons and running games, all culminating in a celebratory 5K race. So they actually do two races, one in November and one in May. We have evolved from a few girls trying to get a few in to give it a try, to 22 girls and a waiting list. And with each season, we have become stronger in many ways. Our cafeteria at Dupont Elementary School supports us by providing healthy snacks for the girls. Through fundraising, Dupont provides us with a location to train, the funds to make sure that each girl has what she needs in regards to clothing and water bottles, and transportation for the girls so they can make it to the 5K. Families are joining their girls for the race, and the coaches help bring their friends in so that every girl has a running buddy, and you know what? They can't wait to start training for the next one. We have several girls who have participated in every season that they've been eligible, so that means six seasons, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and it has been a pleasure to see how they have transformed their lives. Not only have they continued on with the program, but we have seen evidence of academic and social maturing. Our girls learn that you don't have to be the fastest runner to be a success. It is important to set goals and work towards them, and the girls not only work on accomplishing their own goals, but they learn to support each other through encouragement and teamwork. We are very proud to be part of Girls on the Run, which provided Dupont Elementary students the opportunity to offer a different kind of education to our girls in the form of leadership, confidence, and athleticism. We hope to continue our journey for many seasons. So with your, with your okay, I'd like to recognize our girls and our coaches that were able to make it here tonight. Would you like for them to bring their families up at the same time? Okay, so girls, you're going to bring your families with you. So our students are Cecilia Aguilar, Esmeralda Castaneda, Ashley Castillo, Beth Cookson, Isabella Cookson, Jareli Diaz, Naieti Garcia, Natalia Gonzalez, Elisa Gomez, Ashley Favela, Adriana Madera, Jasmine Mora, Kestali Nuneo, Isaura Ocampo, Claire Patterson, Lacey Patterson, Yamilett Orona, Madeline Sanchez, Andrea Solis, Dayanara Sotelo, Chloe Valenzuela, and Paola Vialpando. These are our girls. I, I also would like to recognize the adults that have made this all possible. I'd like to welcome Nicole Berry, Dee Bench, Paula Farcus, and Jordan Peskey. Without their support and their coaching, this wouldn't be possible. So, community, join me once again in saying congratulations to all of our girls on the run.
[applause]
And then come back up here. Scoot down and shake.
Get up there with them as fast as you can.
Scoot down and shake, and then come back.
All right. Ready, girls? One, two, three.
Just being a picture.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll just be...
Okay.
As we get ready to set up for the picture, if everyone can take one step forward, and then if some of the adults can fill in, we're going to have two rows of adults and probably two rows of children. So if you're a tall runner, and you can stand in the back, for instance, and then you can have a shorter runner in front of you, that will help. Okay? And our goal is to have everybody closer to the center. So everybody here, it may feel a little crowded, but it's, we'd like to get you all into one picture if possible.
Oh, okay.
All right, and I see extra space here, so slide on over and get nice and close, please. If you're not touching the person next to you, then you're not close enough.
Yes, I just, I want to say a couple things. So just get him under. Okay.
Here's the first one. One, two, three. Everybody a little closer to the board. One, two, three. And two more. One, two, three, and one more picture, please.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I like your purse, that is what it's in for. And it's a dummy. And, Board President, we also have one more recognition. The other recognition is going to be from Monaco Elementary, Colorado Rockies Essay Contest winner. So Dr. Lachuga.
As you can tell, I'm getting laryngitis, so I'm trying to get through this. And I have my AP wonderful, exceptional Assistant Principal with me, and our teacher, and our student is coming up. Good evening, President Archuleta, Superintendent Dr. Abrego, our distinguished board members and community from Adams 14. Tonight, you are recognizing a very special 3rd grade teacher, a student, and the parents of our student. Our Monaco teacher is Dart Lopez, and our student is Robert Goodson Jr. You're recognizing a student who submitted an essay to the Rocky baseball team, and his excellent essay was selected as honorable mention from hundreds of entries. I sincerely believe that this memorable and honorable event would not be possible if it were not for the excellent guidance and explicit instruction from our wonderful teacher, Mrs. Lopez. I truly believe that it was Mrs. Lopez's instruction and inspiration that helped Robert accomplish this great task. Robert showed everyone what Mrs. Lopez taught him in the area of writing. I must also say that it is not only in writing that Mrs. Lopez excels in. Her students are doing well in reading, math, and science as well. It has been a pleasure to send new teachers to her classroom to see her great work with students. It is my privilege to have Mrs. Lopez as one of our excellent teachers at Monaco. So right now, I would like to congratulate Ms. Lopez. Now, Robert, our student, could not have done this as well by himself. If it were not for parents that are the first teachers in a child's life, that also would not be possible. So I want to thank the parents at this time for their wonderful job. Robert, you showed and you put into play what your teacher has taught you. So a big round of applause for Robert again. Thank you. I know, if you allow Ms. Lopez to say something, she has some words.
Okay. I have been getting Rocky tickets from the Colorado Rockies for our Commerce City kids for 17 years now. I am honored, they have chosen our community for 17 years that I've been applying for the tickets. In the second, in the 17 years I've been doing this, only twice have students been picked from our district when I have done this. This is the first time one of my students was chosen. Robert Goodson wrote a wonderful letter why he thought his dad was a great hero. It was a heartfelt letter about what a great father does, to teach, model, and show his son how to give back. Be the best you can be, and always push through the grit when the going gets tough. His dad has taught Robert lifelong lessons about helping others in need, and how heroes can be dads, moms, teachers, and everyday people with extraordinary gifts to meet the needs of others. Robert is a great student with great parents, who are both heroes in the eyes of their son. His letter was inspiring and uplifting, and beautifully written. He was one of many, many, many entries chosen from the state of Colorado. Monaco was so proud that he was chosen, and as a former Monaco Elementary student myself, congratulations, Robert, we run![1141.08][1141.08][applause]
Thank you, board members, for the recognition.
Thank you. Robert, do you have anything to say?
Robert? Say thank you.
First, I would like to thank everybody that encouraged me to do good in school. And I would like to thank the Rockies for giving me this chance to write an essay. And I thank my parents.
Can we get a picture with you and your parents? Can we get a picture with you and your parents? And the teachers, and the administrator, please? And whoever else you think you need up there.
Two pictures. Here's the first one. One, two, three. And ready, set...
Mr. Chairman, point of information.
Just like to say something, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Lopez. As she mentioned earlier, she attended Monaco Elementary as a young person, attended Adam City Junior High when she was trying to find out who she was. And then she graduated from high school, and then came back. And that's what it's all about, and hopefully the more we can give. I had the pleasure of working with Ms. Lopez when I had her daughter and son in school, and they were in student council. She was always there, helping out the student council, and asking what can she do to make us a better club. So once again, you're deserving of this, and congratulations, Ms. Lopez. Robert, now that you wrote to Rockies, I hope to see you to play for the Rockies. You play baseball?
Play.
Well, you better get to playing baseball. Thank you.
Dr. Hyde.
Thank you. I just wanted to request to have Robert's essay posted on the website for, let's say, a period of two weeks, so that the public at large could read his essay.
I think we can make that happen.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's the, all the recognitions we have.
Except for me, I have a couple of recognitions. Jose, Mr. Guardiola, would you please stand up? City council newly-elect. Mr. Douglas, would you please stand up? City council. And the Honorable Dominic Moreno, one of our students here, Senator Moreno, my friend of mine. And he'd like to say a few words, if that's okay with the audience.
Good evening, School Board President Archuleta, members of the Adams 14 School Board. It's a pleasure to be here before you tonight. I'll start off with just extending my congratulations to Dr. Hyde on his recent election, and Board Director Quintana on her reelection. Very proud to stand before you today as a graduate and product of Adams 14 Public Schools, and as your state senator. Just wanted to come by and give just a brief update of things that are going down, going on down at the legislature. We will start our legislative session on January 10th of next year, and right now, we are in the process of putting together the state budget for next year. I'm a member of the Budget Committee, so I've been back to work for a few weeks now, working on hearing all of the different requests from all of our different departments. I certainly have some good news for you. The budget is in a, in a good place for next year, so you can count on, at minimum, $340 more per pupil for next year. That was the governor's request, and we always take his baseline requests and add some more on top. So you can count on, at minimum, $340 for next year per student, which I think will, will go at least a little bit of the way to making sure that you can provide all the kids in our community a great education. So just wanted to say, I appreciate all you do, and I know there will be many comments about some of the proposed changes to the biliteracy program. I've met with Superintendent Abrego about some of the changes, and I know you'll be hearing a lot about them tonight. All I'll say is that, you know, we, we all worked very hard down at the Capitol to pass the Seal of Biliteracy, to make sure on every student's diploma that it shows that they bring more talents and more, more skills than are readily available on their high school diploma, that if you're fluent in two languages, you can get that Seal of Biliteracy on your diploma, and that's a huge asset to colleges and to employers after kids graduate. So thankfully, gone are the days where speaking more than one language was a liability. Now it's an asset, and that was long overdue. So I'll just say, I certainly hope that you'll, you'll carefully consider some of the changes and just make sure that all of our kids, that their, their multilingual abilities are understood and respected, and appreciate all you do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And that moves us into audience comments. We do have a board policy that talks about three minutes per person. I ask you to give your name, you don't have to give your address, just if you belong to the community or not, and then we'll go from there. So first of all, I'd like to call up Adriana Perry? Did I say it right?
Good evening, Dr. Abrego, and esteemed members of the board. My name is Adrian Perry, and I am currently serving as the District Science TOSA for Adams 14, and I'm here to personally invite you all to our science fair, which we'll be holding on Friday at Adam City High School in the Eagles Nest Gym. It'll be a great opportunity to meet with the kiddos and talk to them about the research that they've done during the judging phase, which will take place between 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 p.m. And then we'll have an award ceremony that's open to the public, starting at, well, the award ceremony will start at 1:30, but guests are asked to arrive around 1:00, where they'll get to interact with the kiddos. And if I can have permission to approach you guys, I can give you all a flyer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to just make a little comment.
I appreciate everybody that comes in here to speak to the Board of Education for whatever you may bring to the table, and I will thank you at the end of your speech for being, taking time out from your day to come here. And it was actually Dr. Hyde that brought that to my attention, that we don't do that enough to the community members. I do appreciate you folks being here to come in and bring whatever you're going to bring to the Board of Education, so I do appreciate it, and I will thank you. I thank you from myself, so thank you. So I know I'm going to butcher your name, Alyssa.
President Archuleta, Superintendent Abrego, and esteemed members of the board, my name is Alyssa Mavretheres, and I'm a teacher at Adam City High School. I was hired five years ago to provide an articulation from the high school to the college level. I had spent the previous seven years at UNC, have taught at CSU as well. The past three out of the four years... The past three out of the four years, you've allowed me to teach the concurrent enrollment classes at Adam City High School, first through Front Range and then through Community College of Denver. This came to a climax last year when I was allowed to teach four separate classes to our high school students. Taught college algebra, college trig, Calc I and Calc II, for a total of 209 credits earned, supported by you, the Board of Education here. All in all, in the last four years, we have had 318 credits earned at the college level in mathematics. Those are students that are going into their college careers not needing remediation in math at all. And for that, I thank you as well. I have 17 students this semester in college algebra, and that is why I'm coming to you now. I also have the dubious distinction of being the first teacher at the high school to submit my letter of resignation this year. I submitted my letter two months ago in hopes that you would be able to find somebody else with the qualifications to teach this class, so this program didn't go away. Dr. Abrego, you mentioned how important it was to provide the early college model and the concurrent enrollment credits, and with, for that, I agree. Unfortunately, because of my propensity to speak up for teachers and students, I have been put in a position at the high school where I feel I am no longer wanted there and can no longer stay. So I will leave at semester with the promise that I will provide support to whoever they may find to replace me in this position. Since I have submitted my letter two months ago, three other teachers have left the building, one other has submitted a letter to leave at semester. I ask that you talk to the teachers at the high school and find out what truly is going on there, because the teachers are unhappy. No, the teachers are miserable, and the teachers are looking to get out. There are teachers applying for other jobs now, there are teachers interviewing for other jobs now. Things are not going well, and you are losing the talent that you have in that building and the people that love these students the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Jorge Garcia.
Buenas tardes, President Archuleta, members of the board, Superintendent Abrego. What do we say to parents who feel scolded for planning a family vacation, feeling like they're being blamed for the low attendance rate at the high school and only the Mexican families? What do we say to families feeling scolded for wanting face-to-face conferences, feeling scolded and being told that they have cell phones, that they can access the internet through their cell phones, that they can get online and get the grades there? What do we say to those parents when they come to us, feeling ashamed, feeling like they are the ones to blame? I've asked no fewer than three times for a meeting with Superintendent Abrego. He's refused to meet. He stated once that I would be contacted in the near future. That was a week ago, and no one has contacted us. We want to clarify for the board, the superintendent, and the public that we are interested in one thing, that is equity and excellence for the students of Adams 14, their families, and the educators who serve them. To that end, after the superintendent published his letter on November 30th stating that he had heard comments hearsay and things that were not fact-checked, we immediately reached out to him, members of the board. We reached out to him and asked him some questions to help us work towards a just resolution. After he refused to meet with us, we asked him to at least answer our questions in writing. No response. His letter states that he has an open-door policy, but obviously, it only opens for some, not for all. Whatever he may respond today to our comments of two weeks ago, please understand that any response is made without any attempt on his part to either understand or address our concerns or issues in an open and transparent fashion. We continue to receive concerns from community members regarding the direction and the culture of the district. The Director of the District's Biliteracy and English Language Development Programs is mysteriously put on administrative leave just days after we offer our public comments. The Secondary Director of Biliteracy, including the Seal of Biliteracy, is stripped of her title and her biliteracy duties, with no communication with the community, again, days after our public comments. The superintendent repeats often, quote, "I've never entertained the idea of eliminating our elementary biliteracy program in grades K through 3." Thank you. But he carefully avoids talking about the entire K through 12 continuum. People being demoted, people placed on administrative leave, biliteracy plans being changed by administrators with no knowledge about the pedagogy, teachers afraid to speak out, parents feeling threatened. These are all things that we understand are happening, so yes, we are concerned about the civil rights violations, about the rebirth of a hostile environment, about a community whose trust has been violated one too many times.
State it, your name, what you didn't state, what are your ties to the community?
My name is Jorge Garcia.
I got that, but what are your ties, because one of the things on the policy...
Director Rolan, I'm going to answer your question, sir, thank you. My name is Jorge Garcia, I'm the Executive Director of the Colorado Association for Bilingual Education with members right here in Commerce City. Teachers, parents have reached out to us, are calling us, asking for our support and our advocacy. We're a civil rights educational organization advocating for civil rights in bilingual education and emerging bilingual students. So this is our community, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Jorge.
Mr. Chairman. Could I make a comment at this time?
Who's it going to be to?
It's kind of a general concern. I would like to see if we could, this type of back-and-forth discussion through several meetings over a number of months, and it seems like we're really not getting any traction. And I would like to ask if we could, just for taking a first step toward trying to resolve some of this, if we could collect some information on staff turnovers. And I would like to have us direct the superintendent to provide us a report on how many people are leaving, how many are resigning, how many are taking early retirement, and give us that report so that we can compare across schools in aggregate form. We might be able to compare our district with other districts. And that would give us at least a starting point, you know, it's just one step in that direction. And it gets us away from saying, you know, he said, she said, and trying to have some basis for determining whether we have excessive turnover across our schools and in our district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Daniel Sullivan.
Thank you, President Archuleta, and Board Directors, Superintendent Abrego. I'm a teacher from Rose Hill Elementary School, Dan Sullivan. I'm here tonight and other P teachers through several meetings here to present some activities and opportunities that physical education offers to students and the community in Commerce City. Tonight, I'd like to tell you about programs that provide bicycles to children whose parents aren't able to afford to buy bikes for the children, and programs that provide information and training on how to walk and ride your bike to school safely. For 10 years now, Lake Arbor Optimists, administered by Steve Sully, a retired principal, has provided bikes to be given to children in need to three of our schools, Rose Hill, DuPont, and Allsup, and plans to give bikes to Kearney as well. Even though Lake Arbor Optimists are located in Arvada, the group is dedicated to helping kids in need in our community and provided bikes for volunteers and for field day events at Rose Hill. They also provide bikes to a Santa shop that provides bikes and toys to families in need, adult programs that provide bikes to people who have gotten out of prison and need to have a bicycle to ride because they cannot drive, to a bike shop, New Spin Cyclory, that sells bikes and teaches childrens with special needs to ride and maintain their bikes and learn skills needed to help them more, to be more independent. We receive the bikes in a number of ways. We've given the bikes to students in a number of ways. We've conducted, or contacted teachers and other school personnel to recommend students in need and donated that way. We also have given them awards at assemblies, withdrawals of academic award tickets. In any way, the students are very grateful, excited to get the bicycle to ride. Bicycles are a wonderful tool for our children to use for many reasons. Exercise, our nation's children are suffering issues of being overweight and the illnesses that brings diabetes, asthma, heart disease, to name a few. Bicycles are a great activity that provides great exercise. Combined with a helmet and a safe place to ride, they're a safe way to provide exercise that our kids need. Transportation, many of our kids live near our schools and are able to walk or ride their bikes to schools. Bicycles are a safe and fun way to get there, and programs provided by Bicycle Colorado and safe routes to school help the kids learn how to get to school safely and ride their bikes safely. At Rose Hill, we have, you know, this is another program that we have for bicycles. Is that Rose Hill, we had a program called Wish for Wheels that actually started at our school many years ago. It provided a new bike and helmet for graduating kindergarteners each year. Unfortunately, we lost this program and the sponsor who paid for the bikes and helmets we received. Wish for Wheels is willing to come back, but required us to find a sponsor to foot the bill. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Kathy Eskamia.
Good evening, members of the governing board, President Archuleta, and Superintendent Abrego. My name is Kathy Eskamia, and I'm a professor at the University of Colorado at Boulder. I am also one of the principal investigators of the Literacy Squared National Biliteracy Project that includes four elementary schools here in Adams County 14. We are a project that is available in eight states. We serve over 450 teachers and 12,000 children. As you may know, it is a biliteracy program that is intended to be implemented in grades K through 5. The project, when well-implemented, represents the state-of-the-art in biliteracy development and stands in sharp contrast to ineffective early exit bilingual programs that were so characteristic of the past. My major reason for being here this evening is to raise concerns about the manner in which Literacy Squared is being implemented here in Adams County and to request a full and public commitment to this program by January 9th, 2018. As reported to you in your last meeting, we would also like to request an opportunity to present findings from this project to the board, because we're quite pleased with how well the children are doing. To reiterate, Literacy Squared is a biliteracy project designed to be implemented in grades K through 5. We began this project in kindergarten and the first grade in 2015 and have grown one grade level each year since. I was in attendance last June 2017 when Superintendent Abrego presented, gave a presentation to the State Board of Education citing Literacy Squared as one of the many programs that would be used to help District 14 get off of its turnaround status. Slides 7 and 12 from that superintendent's presentation that day specifically referred to Literacy Squared. The entire presentation, of course, is available on your district's website. I come here tonight to express concern that the district is undermining the Literacy Squared project, is misrepresenting the project to the community, and is discouraging teachers and principals from implementing the project fully. Evidence for this lack of implementation is as follows. Number one, in a public communication document dated November 30th, Superintendent Abrego stated a commitment to biliteracy programming in grades K through 3. I emphasize that Literacy Squared is designed for K to 5. K-3 early exit projects are the weakest form of bilingual education and have little support in the research literature. Literacy Squared is a K-5 program. Number two, principals at some of our schools have informed third-grade teachers that they should no longer implement the project. In fact, some teachers have been chastised for allowing children to respond in Spanish during regular instruction. Just this past week, we were asked to significantly modify a professional development session that we had scheduled since August. My time is up. My colleague Jody Slavic is here from the University of Colorado, and she will finish the presentation, since my time is up.
Thank you, Kathy. I'll call Jody Slavic.
Thank you. My name is Jody Slavic, I am with the Bueno Center, work with Kathy. I've been working with your Literacy Squared teachers for the past three years, and I'm going to continue with Dr. Eskamia's thoughts. So the professional development plan that we had scheduled for last Thursday, it was approved in August and required only seven substitute teachers to implement. A memo was sent by Chief Academic Officer Burgos to principals on December 7th. It stated that teachers should not be released to attend the professional development, and instead, the learning labs should be videotaped by Literacy Squared staff to be viewed by teachers on their own time. This proposed modification to our professional development plan violates all of the learning principles of the Learning Lab Professional Development Experience, and therefore, we had no choice other than to cancel it. It is unreasonable for teachers to have to watch a videotape on their own time. Further, we were not contracted to videotape, edit, and disseminate videotapes as part of the professional development component of our contract. This is patently unfair to both the teachers in our project who are already working under very stressful conditions and to our own staff for whom this would have created many hours of extra work. Number four, Literacy Squared and other pathways to biliteracy were included in the 2016-2017 Unified Improvement Plan that the district submitted to CDE. These pathways included biliteracy programming from pre-kindergarten to fifth grade, then from sixth through eighth grade, and then from ninth through 12th. However, the Unified Improvement Plan for 2017 through 2019 does not include Literacy Squared or any other biliteracy programming. No educational reform designed to improve academic achievement can be successful without fidelity of implementation and without the support of school site administrators, teachers, and parents. We are concerned that parents are being misinformed by the district about the biliteracy program and that some in the district are working to undermine complete implementation. We would like clarification on your commitment to this program and its full implementation through grade 5, as was the original agreement, and we request this commitment by the next board meeting on January 9th, 2018. We would also like to request an opportunity to share our findings thus far with the board. Absent this commitment, we will consider discontinuing the Literacy Squared program in Adams 14, and we will inform the Colorado Department of Education that Adams 14 is not implementing its proposed turnaround plan as approved in June 2017. We await your response, and thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Judy. Stephanie Levine.
Okay, cool, I'll get three minutes. Okay. Good evening, Dr. Abrego, President Archuleta, and esteemed members of the board. Apologize, sir, for my computer out here, this is the last second decision, but I first want to begin by congratulating Mr. Archuleta as the new board president and say, student council and myself are looking very forward to working with you. But my comment tonight is mostly just to clarify my original audience comment from last month. I think it's really great that you guys... I think it's really great that you guys have now incorporated responses to our comments so that we can ensure that what we had said originally was, you know, acknowledged as well as hopefully responded to. Yes, sorry. So I'm really appreciative of that, that we now have responses that we can make sure it's clear. But again, I wanted to make sure that my original expressive concern was very clear because from your response, Dr. Abrego, it was not. So in my previous speech, I wanted to make the point that your decisions in our school and district leadership are very important and, excuse me, impactful to our students. So in my three minutes, I mentioned one brief example of something that leadership had said to me, but the biggest thing that I really want everyone to know is that now having been here for four years, I can really see that the leadership choices have such unique consequences in our students and I've really been able to see these consequences after being there alongside our students. So the example that I provided you was of an interaction between our current administration and a member of student council. She's an accomplished student athlete and a wonderful leader. The discussion was largely about the future of our school, how they want to work on increasing attendance, class participation, and bettering our school culture, to which the student responded that she knows how hard it is because she's been doing it for four years. My biggest point of this example was that even though our leaders had stated that students don't have to worry about it any longer because they're here now, our student leaders still couldn't believe them. It had nothing to do with those two administrators personally whatsoever. It had everything to do with the fact that our students have been repeatedly let down, disappointed, and left in the dust so many times that they can't even trust their own administration on a yearly basis. Again, they have never felt the privilege of coming back to school year after year to consistency and trust. As I said originally, sometimes our students are seen to be disrespectful or callous, however, they really are just a product of their environment. They've been raised in an academic environment of mistrust and outright caution and they're just trying to protect their school experience and educations from being tampered with. So again, this major point is just in instilling that these characteristics in our students do not make them college or career ready and it actually results in a lack of confidence and mistrust in the education system and potentially in future careers. So I want to end in saying that my concern is always and always will be for our students. They're the reason I have stayed here, the reason I'm speaking to you, and the reason for my intense urgency in this matter. As Ms. Quintana said at the last meeting, the kids should always be put first and I couldn't agree more. Sorry, I have like two seconds left. You have a very important job in choosing the people who make academic decisions for our kids and just in that last point, they're experiencing long-term effects of poor leadership choices and inconsistent staff. So I just urge you to please consider these consequences of future leadership choices because they'll continue to impact our students and community for years to come. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Hogan and I serve also on the CABE board, the Colorado Association for Bilingual Education. I'm here again on behalf of parents and staff who continue to voice their concerns and many have questions about what is happening in the district around bilinguism. CABE has reached out and requested a meeting with the superintendent, but he has refused to meet with us, even though he states he has an open door policy and contact him if we have questions. We have questions. He assured us that someone from his administration would meet with us, but no one has. We feel this is the only space where we can voice the growing concerns of the Adams 14 community. Here are just a few questions we would like answered. At a recent parent forum held on December 7th, parents said that you, Dr. Abrego, said, "So I keep hearing that the district got rid of parent teacher conferences." We did not get rid of parent teacher conferences, yet that's exactly what you did. There are no parent teacher conferences. Parents were told they could check the portal. You also told parents at this meeting that they can meet with teachers at any other time during the school year, that you want them coming in to meet with teachers. Are you paying the teachers for all the extra time that they're going to be meeting with parents on their own time now? Is there no scheduled teacher conferences? Another concern is around why are some elementary school sites being asked to stop testing students in Spanish? If it's true that no changes are being made to the bilinguism program, as you have stated, why are you not testing them in Spanish anymore? Do you not value what they know in their native language? Do you not believe that the skills they know in their first language will transfer and help them as they are learning English? We have heard from high school students who have expressed a concern that after this year, the seal of bilinguism will not be available to them. You have stated that the district is committed to continuing and growing this pathway for high school graduates. However, you only keep bilinguism in K three and you have ELD programming in fourth through 12th grade. You are removing the pathway for students. So can you clarify which pathway you are committed to and growing? Teachers were told there wasn't enough subcoverage so they could not attend the literacy lab by Bueno, yet there was subcoverage to attend another training. Why are teachers being told they cannot attend bilinguism trainings if you are still supporting bilinguism? There seems to have been a culture change in the recent weeks, months, with many teachers and administrators reporting that they feel intimidated by the messaging they are hearing and they fear they're losing their jobs if they speak up. Are any of you concerned that your staff is fearful? Is that your intended culture you want to create? If you are all about transparency, why don't you meet with them? Why don't you hold a parent forum and address these issues head on? You said in your letter, Dr. Abrego, that you believe in better and we need to put students first. Your actions don't match your words. Your actions are not putting students first. So please tell me, what is your definition of better?
Did you want to respond?
I mean, was that the last one?
No, no.
Good evening, distinguished members of the board and Superintendent Abrego. My name is Joy Kemna and I'm the first grade bilingual teacher at Monaco Elementary. In 2015, my first grade classroom was selected to be one of the Literacy Squared Research classrooms. I would like to share with you some of the triumphs I've seen over the past three years and also get some questions answered. Prior to teaching in a bilinguism classroom, I taught an English-only first grade class with a high percentage of ELL students. During literacy instruction, I witnessed ELL students who could decode words, but their accuracy and comprehension were not enough to advance them to the next level as readers. Being able to teach my students to read in their home language of Spanish has made the task so much more meaningful for them. When learning to read in Spanish, students still need to decode accurately and to construct meaning, but the process is more accessible and far more students are reading on grade level. However, it isn't only in Spanish literacy where my students are thriving. One of the benefits we have as bilinguism teachers is that we can capitalize on language transfer and metalinguistic strategies to propel our students' growth in English as well. Our emergent bilingual students often have twice the cognitive load. They are simultaneously doing the work of learning the content standards while also learning language. Because we know what they are capable of in their home language, we can fill in the gaps and push them to high achievement in all content areas. In a district where there are concerns that parents aren't involved in their children's academic success, I can wholeheartedly share that that is not the case. The partnerships that we have fostered with parents by communicating with them in their language, by welcoming them into our schools, and by providing homework and reading activities in Spanish that they feel empowered to help their children with at home is yet another way that our bilinguism program is giving us an advantage. Many of my esteemed colleagues and parents from our community are here tonight and they are much better suited to speak about what our bilinguism program means to students in terms of identity and cultural pride. But standing before you tonight as a white woman, I would be remiss to not give voice to what I see happening within our district. While children in other districts are given the opportunity to learn a world language, our students in Adams 14, the majority of whom speak a language other than English at home, are not afforded the opportunity to maintain their home language and become bilinguist. Instead of acknowledging the myriad benefits of bilingualism, our administrators question whether our emergent bilingual students will be able to perform on standardized tests and if we should limit Spanish instruction in the pursuit of raising test scores. We must take care that these pursuits do not lead us down a road of policies that further institutionalize racism and the marginalization of our emergent bilingual students. I read the letter that Dr. Abrego sent out to clarify his position on bilinguism programming. K through three bilinguism program was mentioned several times in that letter. My questions are, are we committed to expanding our bilinguism program as outlined in both our district innovation plan and our agreement to resolve with the Office of Civil Rights? Will our third grade students receive instruction in a fourth grade bilinguism classroom in the coming school year? And is Adams 14 committed to maintaining the integrity of our K through 12 bilinguism programming through adherence to instructional minutes in Spanish, authentic assessments of our bilingual students, and a continued pathway to the seal of bilinguism? I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barb McDowell?
She's in overflow room.
She's in overflow room?
Barb McDowell, good evening, President Archuleta, Dr. Abrego, distinguished members of the board. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Classroom Teachers Association. As part of CTA's community outreach, on December 6th, CTA hosted our first house meetings with the community. We asked questions from our, over 15 parents showed up from six sites. The questions they were asked is what's going well at your school? What would you like to see improved? What are you willing to do to see these improvements? And to finish this quote, Adams 14 students deserve. The six schools that were represented were Adam City High School, Adam City Middle School, Allsepp, Monaco, Kearney, and Rose Hill. I will share later some of that information. In addition, the next meeting we will have will be with students because that's what the parents asked. Chaos at ESS in this past week has given me multiple texts, multiple phone calls, emails, Facebook messages, and has created a fear and worry throughout the district, what's going on? They don't know what's going on. They don't know who to ask. They don't know who to talk to. A flow chart would be really critical so people know who is doing what. Third, personnel on leave has created a great fear and distrust with staff members all over. Many employees and colleagues are wondering who is next? Am I next? It is also reminiscent of previous administrations. Then let's go to DAC. On the same day that we held our house meetings, DAC was held and it was told that they were going to be looking at the calendar and schedule, but when they arrived, that's not what happened. Now to calendar. In December of 2016, Gina Otobie, our UNISERV director who supports the teachers unions here in Commerce City, Brighton, Mapleton, and District 12, Jason Monberg, our teachers' union bargaining chair, and I brought up that parent teacher conferences was not on the calendar. October, although teachers needed and staff needed the rest, one thing I will share from this house meeting and from teachers is, two days in October would have been sufficient, but the other three days at Thanksgiving especially because there were a lot of absences both by staff and students. Next, attendances. Yes, we realize that attendance is important, but teachers being harassed because they're sick or on FMLA should not be happening. I'm going to bring up too one last thing. When guests are up here speaking, attacking them and asking what their role is for this district, over 100 teachers have gone through the Bueno Center program, myself included. So I would say their link is to educating our teachers. Thank you.
Good evening, President, I'm sorry, I'm sick, school board members. I'll wait. Are we okay? I have been a teacher in this district 27 years and I am remiss to be here. I have lived through the Office of Civil Rights with my colleague, Mr. Reyes, teacher from Mexico, and I am so remiss to be here and I am so saddened that we are at the same place we were in 2008. Retention of teachers, good teachers. We do not have teachers. There is a shortage of teachers, yet we are allowing good teachers to leave this district because of what and how we treat them. We are talking about the right for students to learn in their native language and be proud of it and confident and we are at the same place that we were in 2008. Language, once again, we are once again admin against teachers' unions and against teachers. We are doing all the same things we did eight years ago. It's like deja vu and it is sickening. I prepare in two to three years, Lord willing, to retire, but I tell you, this district has taken my heart, my soul, my health, and all because I love these kids. I grew up in this district. I went to Adam City. I graduated. I came back here and to see the same things happening in this community makes me so sick to my stomach. I sit there in my chair, my stomach feels the same way it felt in 2008. I sat in an office of investigation with the Office of Civil Rights lawyer. I gave her names of teachers, parents, community members who were being discriminated against. I was only one person, but many of us went through that and to be here at this same exact place, it's not okay to be talking about another OCAR investigation. And then you want us to turn around and you want us to come off of those labels and make and impact our students. How can we impact our students when our community is once again in total chaos? It is heartbreaking. I just, I don't even know what to say. And to have resources like Kathy Eskamia, the literacy program, the Bueno Center, how are we not embracing those programs? How lucky are we? You know? I just, I leave here brokenhearted for our students because we as adults, grown adults, are not doing what is right for our community. You all take part in that and so do we. And Dr. Abrego, you as a leader have to get this put together. You're closing doors, the union doors are getting closed. You know, in our building, our principal sits with teachers. She asks them what they need to be successful. She sets next steps with them and then she checks in with them. I've been privileged to be in those meetings. We have to work together. It is not the teachers' union against all of you. We need to do what's best for kids. Again, please, please do those things that you need to do as elected officials from Commerce City.
I'd like to say something, if you'll bear with me, okay? We're in the process of setting up community members, I mean, community meetings with the members, okay, with all of the community. I want everybody to come and I've talked it over with some of the board members here and talked with all of them yet because I haven't scheduled it, but I'd like that to happen sometime in January because I think it's time we hear the community. You know, we always talk about the community and I see a lot of the community members here, but I don't see all of them. And this is, I don't want this to be their only forum to come and speak out. I wish they would come to the meeting. So if you, when I get the notification ready for everybody to do, I'll send it out and hopefully you'll come to the meeting, you'll bring your community members with you so we can hear from you folks, okay? So just so everybody knows, I know we're not supposed to talk about, answer any of these questions. I'm not answering any of these questions from the DIAS because I don't have the answers yet. I don't even know the questions really and I won't know that until I meet with the community members and all of the board here understands what exactly you're saying and why you're saying, what it is you're saying. So just so you know, we're in the process of making that happen, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I know it's difficult to take out of your dinner schedule to come to a board meeting, but I do appreciate you all being here, saying what you need to say. but I do appreciate you all being here, saying what you need to say. Hopefully, this is one forum that you can say that, but we're going to have other forums where you can say that also. So just so you know, we're working on moving the district forward, and I'm willing to do whatever it is I need to do to make sure that we continue moving forward. So, yes.
Gedmo, you could have filled out a card, but go ahead.
Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 100 in second place. Commerce City. I see a teacher. I see a student. I see a parent. A teacher, born and raised, didn't have enough to possibly make college. Bilingual program with the assistance of a bilingual, and you can call it anything you want, committee that can hear the community and their complaints before it goes out is going to be and would be very useful to you because that's where the discussion from the community comes, and you don't have to go after them. If they want better education for their children, they should be there from every school. Out of the committees that we used to have before bilingual education, you have a professor, Mrs. Eskamia, who provided the training of empowerment, who provided the training of how to ask questions, who provided the data of what was really happening in our schools. Don't see that anymore. It's the empowerment of the community because the curriculum and everything that goes through it should be discussed thoroughly with each community, and that's every school. I'm giving you a suggestion. You have three or two directors that deal with one or the other. Give them the opportunity to come to a committee with enough empowerment directed by you to be able to communicate with you on meetings regularly so that you can hear them and what their needs are, what their children's needs are, okay? This is what you need. You can do everything you want, and I keep hearing, what's the answer? What's the answer? With the experience that I have, I'm suggesting that you create some form of an empowered committee to talk to you on what's going on in the districts. And I think that that will give the people the opportunity to discuss with you before it becomes statewide. And you can discuss it and hear what their problems are, okay? And what their needs are to participate. If you dumped the visiting of schools, then that may be discussed beforehand, and you can work through it through the superintendent or whoever he chooses to put there to refer back to the community. It's just a suggestion, possibly a solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Gedmo. Thank you. So Dr. Abrego, do you have?
Yes, thank you, President Archuleta. And for audience, I do want to clarify my position. It's very important that you listen and that you understand where I'm coming from. And I also want to say the importance of communicating with each other because I don't like to learn from things that I'm doing from people in the audience. As I said, come see me, okay? Monica's my secretary. Monica, you know how to set up my meetings. Whoever wants to meet with me, please come. But I'm going to try to answer your questions. I'm going to be honest, and I'll tell you exactly what my position is. On the seal of biliteracy, I don't know what you've heard, but we totally support, and I totally support and encourage as many students as possible to earn the seal of biliteracy. I want that. I am pleased to say that Adams 14 is a leader in the state in this area. We're one of the top three districts that have that seal on our students' diploma. Last year, we had approximately 46 seniors earn distinction, earned this distinction, and I personally went to the high school principal and I said, "Why only 46? We graduate 400 students. Why can't you shoot for 100?" So we do want the seal of biliteracy, and we want as many students as possible, and we want to be number one in the state in this area. But remember, we have 24 languages here, and we must respect and honor all those languages. So I think people think the seal of biliteracy is only in one area, Spanish. You can earn it in many different languages. So all I want to do is be fair to everyone in our community, respect every language. That's all we want. Give those people avenues. Also, some of the comments made last time, they said various individuals stated that Adams 14 wants to keep, for Adams 14 to keep the seal of biliteracy. Who said it was going away? I never did. You just heard my position saying that I want more and more students to earn this. We totally support the seal of biliteracy and want to offer the seal to every student who can master any language, any language, any two languages, you get the seal of biliteracy. Whenever students are truly bilingual and have attained English proficiency, they will have the tools and knowledge to succeed. Just this week, I sat down with Senator Moreno, he was here. I thanked him for introducing that bill, and I said, "Thank you. We'll do our best to support it because we do know that it prepares our kids for the world of college or work." So if anyone says that Dr. Abrego does not support, I totally support it. Bilingual education and raising test scores. I'm sorry to say that when I went to school, there was no bilingual education, so I couldn't take advantage of that. But as an individual, I fully, and the district fully supports bilingual education as a model to help our limited English proficient students attain English proficiency, develop high levels of academic English, and meet the same challenging state academic content and student achievement standards as all other students. So please know that I do support bilingual education. Very important. Adams 14 is committed to providing materials and resources to all classrooms and professional development to all teachers to support development of our limited English proficient students and all other students. That's what we're here for. So that is my position. That's the district's position. Adams 14 does not support English-only, the English-only model. I just told you, we support bilingual education, and we, our goal is not to support English-only as a model to help our limited English proficient students learn English. The only thing I could say is that parents do have a choice, and if they request English-only, we have to honor that. But again, English-only, we have never told anyone not to use their language, not to talk to the kids in Spanish, the students not to use their native language. We respect that. We just said, we have to respect all the cultures, not just the Spanish, but all the other 24 languages that are in our district. Adams 14 clearly understands that English-language learners must have unique support to learn English and to have success in our classrooms. We are committed to providing these support for our students. And all the parents you hear are concerned about programs? I'm glad you are. Thank you. Because our parents community, your input is very important on the English language development program that will be implemented in your school. It will not be Dr. Abrego that tells you what program to implement. It's going to be you. You're going to have to analyze the data, and you're going to have to determine what is best for your kids. That's not, that's not my job. That's your job. So please get together and do that for us. I have just stated that Adams 14 is committed to having outstanding, outstanding English-language acquisition programs that supports the needs of all our students that can't speak English. We agree that having the involvement and input of our principals, of our teachers, of our staff, of our parents, and our community is very important to the success of our bilingual, our ELD, or biliteracy program. We also understand that each school has a unique community of learners. All the kids are different at every single school. Therefore, I have instructed the principals to meet with all the stakeholders, to meet with the principals, to meet with the parents, to meet the needs of their limited English-proficient students, and develop the best program possible that will meet the needs of their particular school. The only thing I asked our principals is that you must meet the legal requirements. I mean, that's, that's fair, right? Title I, Title II will tell you what you have to do as far as the legal requirements. Get the input from all your stakeholders because I don't want people coming back to me and saying, "We don't have a good program." Well, you should because you had input. You guys were the ones that developed it. So please make sure that all stakeholders, our parents, are involved in these decisions. They're going to be made at each school, so every school may look a little bit different, but every school will have an outstanding English development program. And again, please make sure that they meet the needs of your students, and we have highly qualified teachers. And once you do have that program, you have to implement it with fidelity. This week again, I spoke with Senator Moreno. I said, "Senator Moreno, we need your help. Thank you for initiating the seal of biliteracy. Thank you for initiating breakfast in the classroom." But I said, "We need your help with one more thing. We need legislative, legislative powers to draft something to help us get more qualified English development teachers or teachers to help our English-language learners." So he's going to try to help us on that end. But that's, that's very important. So again, whatever you've heard about the programs, it is not my decision. That is a school decision based on the needs of your students. You get together, you figure it out, and you implement the best program possible. As far as the parent-teacher conferences, I know that parents want to meet with the teachers one-on-one, and all we're doing is we're trying to do things different. We believe in better. What's so hard about that? All parents have value having a relationship with their child's teacher. That's why we have developed options of how to connect parents and teachers anytime throughout the year, not just the one day, throughout the year, ongoing. Parents can still connect with teachers face-to-face. You can also email them. You can call them, and you can have access to the information online. You can check your child's grades, homework assignments, behavior, attendance, anytime you want. Now, that's just another avenue. So we want to make sure we give you all those options. We did, we're just trying to do things better. And I know a lot of people say that they're concerned about the OCI agreement, so I am concerned too because there were many concerns, very serious concerns, made two weeks ago. So my job as superintendent, individuals are concerned, here's what we're doing. People that have concerns about the Adams 14 may be violating the OCI agreement. I can honestly say that we have been monitoring and honoring this agreement faithfully. And I know you say, "Well, he's just saying that." We have processes in place to assure we're complying with all components of the agreement. In addition, we have also secured the assistance of a third-party expert in response to all your allegations. So I'm not looking into it. I've got an expert coming in to make sure that we are doing everything correctly because that's what we're all about. Beyond that, I also went to the Colorado Department of Education, and I said, "I'm requesting that you come into Adams 14. You do an audit of our ELL program, and also, please come in and guide us on the modifications on our turnaround plan." So if we're doing something wrong, we will take the responsibility. But we're hiring experts. We're going to have people come in that are unbiased to come in and look at it. Isn't that what you want? I mean, you want us to make sure that we're doing everything correctly? So I can't do this because I'm biased. So we're going to bring in outside people to do this for us. And we're trying to make things better for you. Again, I do have an open-door policy. I will sit down with individuals one-on-one. There's my secretary. Please set up an appointment. I will talk to you. But the last thing I want to close with is, please view this video because we're trying to just do things different. And I know everyone's used to the one-day parent-teacher conferences, but we're trying to do things different. Maybe I didn't explain it correctly to you, but Cameron, can we show the video so we can let our public know what we're trying to do?
Parents and families are extremely important to the success of a child.
Parents and families are extremely important to the success of a child.
At Adams 14, we encourage parents to take an active role in supporting their child's education. That kind of involvement leads to success in school, graduation, and entrance to college or career. To support parents' needs, schedules, and preferences for communication. Adams 14 parents have a variety of options. Many parents like face-to-face communication with each of their child's teachers. While other parents prefer email or web communication. At Adams 14, we have options for both. We believe families are best served with a customized approach, and we extend an invitation to parents to meet with their child's teacher at any point throughout the year. Give the teacher a call or send an email to make an appointment. You and the teacher can determine how long to meet so you can be informed, ask questions, and receive guidance and feedback. Sometimes, parents just need basic information about things like grade-level expectations, testing schedules, or daily routines. Individuals, schools, and set times for grade-level parent meetings where all teachers provide this information to parents. Other times, parents would rather monitor their grades, homework, and attendance on their own. Parents can do this anytime through a password-protected website called Parent Portal through a campus. This online option gives parents frequent updates on things like child's grades and tests, homework, class schedules and attendance. To display this information in Spanish, simply make that selection at the bottom of the page. To get connected, just contact the school secretary to learn how to read and understand all the information. The ways you can stay connected are your child's teacher. The ways you can stay connected are your child's teacher. School office staff, family liaison, parent portal, school meetings and parent engagement days. Parents' needs are met with direct connection to a teacher. And parents choose if they want a personal meeting, an email exchange, or a way to monitor their students' daily work. Adams 14 parents have options.
And thank you. And I know we're doing things different, so I'm not quite sure on the date. I don't know if Ms. Bogus is here. It's either, I know it's either January 8th or 9th where we don't have students, and we call it a parent engagement day. So please find out what's going on in your school because it may not be called parent-teacher conferences, but it does give you an opportunity to go in and meet with teachers and take care of whatever you need to take care of. So again, we're just doing things different.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I'd like to make a comment about the whole discourse that we've had this evening about the literacy program. And as I listen to our superintendent and the members from the audience coming up and giving their comments, I feel as though it's kind of like two ships passing each other in the night. And I think it would be helpful if, perhaps not, not this evening, but if the superintendent could address the specific concerns that have been voiced at the podium, the audience's podium. And, and I think, I mean, I heard the words of the superintendent saying he's supporting it, and yet when I hear members from the audience come up, they have some very specific concerns that they stated and laid out. And I'm just thinking, you know, what would it take for me to feel like my concerns, if I were in the audience, had been really addressed? It would be to have a kind of a point-to-point rejoinder on those, those issues. And I know, you know, it's, it's not, you know, you might perhaps want some time to prepare for it, and maybe at the next meeting. But I think that that would... But I think that that would go a long ways towards making believers out of a lot of the people who are questioning what the true intent is.
Thank you, Dr. Hyde. And for all our parents, again, you know, you can come here and voice your concern, but it, I'm just going to give you another avenue. If you just follow policy and fill out the form on KE, whatever your concern is, that one is answered right away, within a day or two, and you have it in writing, that way, you know, we're very specific as to you had a concern, here is the, the response to your concern. So again, you don't have to wait and come here again. If you do that policy, KE, I will either take the question myself or give it to whatever department has to address it, and we can get you that, that, we can address your concern immediately.
Thank you. So now, if, if the students would like to go, I know that they were going to do regular board business, but if you need to go home and get ready for school tomorrow, we understand, but you're welcome to stay if you'd like.